Evening everyone and welcome to our council meeting of January third. I would just like to ask for the calling of the role, please.
Mayor Sidney.
Present.
Reeveeman.
Present.
Councillor Sabalski.
Present.
Councillor Dick.
Present.
Councillor Legree.
Present.
Councillor McDonald.
Present.
And Councillor McWherter.
Present.
Mayor Sidney, we have Quorm.
Thank you very much. As we gather, we would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Algonquin people. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history and we are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all of the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. Any declaration of pecuniary interest? Hearing and seeing none. Announcements and community events? I just want to do a quick Happy New Year to everybody and welcome to 2023 and I think it's going to be a busy year. And to anybody watching, Happy New Year to you as well and we're going to work hard and do our best for the community. So, hold on because 2023 is going to be something you've never seen before. Any other announcements or community events? Councillor Dick?
Mayor Sidney, through you, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that a Renfrew resident and a childhood friend of mine, Alan Lettall, is actually coaching Team Canada in the World Juniors. Very proud that he's from Renfrew. I still see his dad every day at Tim Hortons and we chat all the time and just wanted to give him a shout out and hopefully they can bring home the gold.
Yeah, I saw that and the funny thing is, he was part of the Renfrew Rumble in ninety-three when I was too, when he just got drafted, so he was there with his jersey, so I saw that too. So, congratulations to him. Any other announcements? Hearing none. So, seeing this is a special council meeting of council orientation, I am now going to hand it over to Director Aslan and his team for our wonderful in-depth orientation. Thank you.
How in-depth would you like it? Yeah, so, so thank you very much, Mayor Sidney and council. This is sort of ongoing on our series of orientations for council. This part deals mainly with infrastructure and public works department as it relates to environment. So, that's water, sewage, waste management and other environmental issues that we deal with. So, we have a series of three presentations. We have guests with us, Amy Hennessy and Austin Mitchell and Andy Trader from Aqua, who will do two presentations for us and tell us about the treatment plant. And then we have Amanda Springer here with us, part of our team, the environmental officer, and she'll tackle the waste management and some of the other environmental issues that we're dealing with. And these presentations will be at a high level and we have presentations up on display here as well as part of your council packages. So, so today we're going to deal with a little bit about the Waukatoon tragedy, the regulatory framework and the servicing basics, like what does our servicing look like? We're going to turn it over to Austin to do the water treatment, wastewater treatment, the operational side. And then Amy Hennessy is going to talk about our Aqua services and standard of care, which is very important to municipal councils. And then Amanda will do the waste management. So, so we'll just continue to flip through the slides here. So, the function, I think we presented the function of our department before is to plan, build, operate and maintain the infrastructure required to provide the services that the community needs based on the level of service selected by council and legislation. So, when it comes to water and wastewater, there's a lot of legislation that is mandated by the province. You know, obviously we need to have safe drinking water and we need to dispose of sewage in an environmentally responsible way so we don't contaminate the environment. So, we do have some resources to help us with Aqua doing the treatment plants and stand pipes. The infrastructure and public work staff do the engineering, the public works along with the water and wastewater repairs and maintenance and capital planning parts of that. Consultants and contractors are involved in all their major capital replacement projects, like the larger projects, and they spend thousands of hours per year in services to provide the inspections and designs and the project management for those projects. And the finance department handle all the water billing and policy issues surrounding that. So, the next slide here. While we're doing this, we have to maintain our compliance and live in liability and basically keep the community safe and meet the expectation of all the people that we serve, which includes the ratepayers, agencies, emergency services, council and staff, the business community and developers, and we can probably keep adding on to that list because there's many people that rely on our services. Just a little bit about the Waukatoon tragedy in May two thousand, the water contamination by E. coli led to an outbreak. Twenty-three hundred people fell ill and seven people died as a result of that tragedy and the water contamination. So, at that time, the province of Ontario kind of came out with a statement that nobody in Ontario would get sick from drinking water again if they could help it. So, so they looked at all the legislation that supported the water treatment industry and all the testing, the laboratories, you know, and came up with regulations and supporting documents to basically reinforce the way we operate and how we operate today is kind of a result of all these changes in legislation. So, the Justice O'Connor had prepared a two-volume report and if you, if you want something, you want to dig into it more, they're worth the read, you know, what can possibly go wrong? And there's a lot of things that went wrong and a lot of changes that have been made in the industry to plug the holes to make sure that these things won't happen again. So, and the Safe Drinking Water Act is sort of the main framework of legislation that supports with all the supporting regulations. And I think Amy is going to talk more about the framework as well. So, again, the Waukatoon, there was an outcome of many, many things, our drinking water licensing, our permits to take water, drinking water works permit, the operator training, there was like a bunch of different pieces of legislation that were put in place. And on the next slide, we have just as far as the overview of the facilities that we operate. The town of Renfrew is actually the owner of all the facilities, so we have Ontario Clean Water Agency operating on our behalf, but we're the owners. If there's a problem, essentially the ministry will come to us as the owners of the system and they'll be talking to us first. And if we're going to court, we're likely going to be dragged into court along with anybody else who may be involved, so it's pretty serious. But, the Ontario Clean Water Agency, they operate our water treatment plant, our stand pipe and our wastewater treatment plant. Then the town of Renfrew staff operate the water distribution system, the wastewater collection system, the sewage pumping stations and water booster station. Just an overview when it comes, and this is an actual photo of the Bonneville River at the powerhouse there and you can see, so you know, it goes from a white water situations when, in the springtime when there's lots of runoff and goes almost into drought conditions in the summertime and the water quality changes drastically from moment to moment depending on what's flowing in the river and how much water is flowing. There's a lot of sediment in the water, so it's a very challenging water source. And the picture on the right-hand side here shows the discharge of the Bonneville River into the Ottawa River. So, you can sort of see a noticeable difference in the quality of the water from the Ottawa River. And it's not because we've added anything to the water at the treatment plant or anything, we're actually clarifying the water at the wastewater treatment plant and improving the quality beyond the raw water quality in the river. So, so it's a very challenging water source, but it's served the municipality quite well over the years. But, if you talk to people that were here thirty years ago, they had a lot more water quality issues than we have today. We've made a lot of improvements in the water, but we still have ways to go. There's still improvements that can be made. Okay, the, we won't drag into the treatment process, but every water plant has a specific series of processes that need to be implemented to get the proper disinfection and credits and treatment to satisfy the legislation. And I'll let Austin talk more about that later on. And the wastewater treatment has a very similar process, but like a different type of process for wastewater treatment. So, and Austin will talk more about that. So, the next slide is the distribution system. So, we're just skipping along, Victoria's doing a good job to keep up here. Okay, we talked about the inventory of the infrastructure at our last orientation meeting. So, when it comes to water, we have one water plant, we have seventy-four kilometers of water mains, eight hundred valves, four hundred and four hydrants and thirty-three hundred, approximately thirty-three hundred services. So, we own the services that serve each house from the main to the property line, okay? And then from the property line into the house is the owner's responsibility. So, if somebody has a leak, we turn off the valve at the property line. If it's leaking on the owner's side, then it's his responsibility or their responsibility. If it's leaking on the roadside, then it's our responsibility to fix. So, on the sanitary side, we have one wastewater plant and we have sixty-one kilometers of sewers, we have nine hundred and forty-seven manholes, we have six sewage pumping stations and approximately the same number of services as the water services. But, there's approximately seventy, seventy properties that are on septic systems in the town, so everybody else is on a piped water and sewer system. So, generally, and I'm not sure how familiar everybody is with, with the infrastructure that exists underneath the road, but this diagram here sort of illustrates it. And I did include some photos, some actual photos of some construction on the main street where we have water mains, we have sanitary lines, we have storm drainage lines and manholes and we have utilities and gas lines underneath the road. So, when we undertake a construction project, we have to kind of like feed these lines, you know, up above and below and around all these pieces of infrastructure. And there's a lot of, a lot of concerns that the contractors have and that's why the costs are driving up to like, you know, when you have to work around gas mains, it adds a lot of construction cost to the, to the projects. And, you know, when they're installing the infrastructure, there's a lot of confined space issues, you know, safety issues regarding digging trenches in different types of soils, managing the traffic around the construction sites as well, as well as providing all the infrastructure for road drainage and what have you. So, so it's kind of like a maze of infrastructure underneath the road. Do you, you know, the surface of the road, you just see the little manholes on the top, the manhole covers and everything is pretty clear, but when you really get into the underground under a street, there's a lot of infrastructure running under there that present conflicts. Okay, the next slide, water servicing issues. You know, we keep the system operating and we have to maintain chlorine residuals right to the very furthest point of our systems to maintain compliance. And the principle there is that if there's a chlorine residual in the water and it interacts with something that shouldn't be there, there's some disinfection power in the water to disinfect that whatever it runs into from, from the point when it leaves the plant to the point where it enters into a, into a home. So, so before, there used to be just a detectable chlorine residual, now we have to actually measure point zero five milligrams per liter free chlorine residual. So, so we have our staff continuously, you know, out there sampling different locations. The Ontario Clean Water Agency samples all over town for compliance purposes. Now, if you've, if you've never seen inside of a cast iron water main, you might be shocked to think that your drinking water is actually running through a pipe like that, but, you know, there are, there are many, many, many cast iron pipes in Renfrew and, you know, the Argyle Lock Hill program is designed to remove those cast iron pipes. So, you know, when, when there's hydrants that flow water aggressively or if there's a fire or if there's changes in direction of water, sometimes it stirs up some of the contents and biologically it's safe, it's, you know, it can impart a color into the water, but that's just some of the things we're dealing with. In this picture on the left, you can see that the wall thickness of that pipe is very, very thick. So, like even though it's cast iron, there's many cast iron pipes, but during the war, there was a shortage on cast iron. So, so what they did is they started to manufacture the pipes and they made thinner walls in the pipes. So, we could have various grades of cast iron in the ground and some of the older ones are maybe not, not the worst ones because they have the thick walls. And the ones in the forties and fifties and sixties, they had thinner walls and maybe more subject to corrosion and problems and leaks. Then they came out with different pipes like ductile iron pipe who made even thinner walls and cement lined the inside of the pipe so that it wouldn't be, you wouldn't get this kind of corrosion happening on the inside. And the thinner walls, I think on Mattaway Park Drive, there's ductile iron pipes that were installed and they're having a lot of problems. They were installed in about the eighties and there's many, many leaks on those pipes, so we have to essentially replace them. So, so the age is not a really good indicator of the life of the pipe, it's, as the materials are always changing. And we do monitor, monitor, monitor our water systems. If there's any leaks, we have to fix them or they could create, you know, make massive sinkholes that could have, you know, swallow vehicles and roads and things as well as wastewater. If there's water main leaks, sometimes they find their way into basements and cause basement flooding and stuff. So, our staff are continuously monitoring for leaks and repairing them when necessary. A lot of maintenance goes into our sewage pumping stations that relay the sewage from one part of the system to the other. And, and we make a point here that we can't shut off the supply of sewage, like, you know, you can't, you can't just stop the flow of water in the pipes as people are using. There's thirty-three hundred customers essentially flushing their toilets and what have you and if we have to deal with it, then they have to, you know, bypass pump it around a location or find ways to deal with it, but it's, it never stops, you can't turn it off. And I guess from the water supply, you can't, you can't easily disconnect, you know, a bunch of consumers from the water system either without causing all kinds of problems. So, so that's, you know, we're always managing, trying to maintain some element of supply even though we're having problems. We have to keep the services going as much as we can and only isolate the areas that are absolutely necessary for the repairs. The entire town has water meters installed and that basically serves as the basis for billing and both on the water side and the wastewater side. And you'll, you'll have lots of concerns as councillors express to you that the water rates are too high and what have you. And water, the water system is actually run on a cost-neutral basis, so we only collect as much, as much revenue as we need to support the activity to maintain the system. So, it's not for profit. In Europe, they have privatized the water system and, you know, so they have companies like British Energy that are operating the water systems and charging profit and they have these card lock meters on your, on the, on the house. And when, you know, you go load it up with a hundred dollars and when your hundred dollars is up, your water shuts off, right? So, so here we have quite a bit of a different system. And the water, the water billing is done on, there's two components to it. There is a base charge and a consumption charge. So, the base charge is essentially just a fixed amount that we charge for the water on a monthly basis and then the consumption is based on how much you use. So, there's two elements of that. Yeah, so I'm on the challenges slide now, so yeah, so you can keep going. So, challenges, we do have some challenges and I think Austin is going to talk a little bit about the manganese and the water and we can talk more about that later on. A lot of areas of the system do not have storm sewers, so, you know, if they don't have a storm sewer in the street, then all the water that's melting on the street flows into catch basins that might be connected back into the sanitary system and all that water flows down to the sewage plant on a rainy day or on a day the snow is melting and the fly, or the flows at the treatment plant can multiply by ten times. You know, they could be operating at five thousand and end up at fifty thousand cubic meters per day going through that plant from rain events. So, when we do the infrastructure projects to replace water mains and fix sanitary sewers, we also disconnect the storm systems from the sanitary systems. And again, that's, that's adding a lot of cost, but if you think about it, we're diverting water from the sewage system, so that's eventually going to free up capacity for residential sewage treatment down the road. So, the idea is if we keep on doing storm sewer separation, then we don't have to build a bigger, a bigger plant to handle more water. We can use the existing plant, make it more efficient, maybe optimize the process to, because the plant infrastructure at, you know, ten million dollars doesn't get you much of an upgrade in a treatment plant these days, like they're, the upgrades are like thirty, forty million dollars for sewage treatment plant upgrades. So, our plant was upgraded in two thousand and nine on the sewage side and two thousand and four on the water side. So, they're, they're pretty, pretty new, but getting older quickly. Let's see. I note on this challenges slide here that we, the Ontario Clean Water Agency contracts do expire in two thousand and twenty-five and so I think Amy is going to talk a little bit about that. And, or Amy, sorry, I keep mispronouncing your name. This next slide is just, you know, the, just to show you that any, any changes that we do make in the system like this is, in the treatment system at the plant, we're considering adding a potassium per manganese treatment system for manganese and that requires us to go through a design and actually get drawings prepared, put it on paper. There's mechanical elements, there's instrumentation elements, electrical elements that have to be coordinated. There's also approvals that we have to seek to go get the Ministry of Environment and Conservation and Parks approval and director's direction and there's a whole process to follow when we make changes in our treatment system to make sure that it's, it's got all the accountabilities in there. So, and this, this is actually a drawing from our potassium per manganese system that is at the final stages of design to implement for manganese treatment. This slide, next slide here is we do operate a drinking water quality management system. So, the province has mandated that the drinking water systems have a quality management system similar to ISO certification for manufacturers. And essentially it represents, you know, the, the operation plan will say, you know, how we operate the system. And then, you know, they come back and audit, audit and determine, are we actually operating the system and documenting it in the manner that we say we're operating it? So, it's almost like a quality management process. And there are twenty-one elements, I won't go through them all here, but tonight, later on, Amanda Springer is going to, to present a, an update to our operation plan. And, you know, that, that is going to address some improvements in a number of these elements and especially number twenty-one continual improvement. So, I think Amanda will tell you a little bit about that later. So, the, the system, you know, I guess, does, do the councillors have to come out to the plants and do inspections? Well, we have many, many other agencies that are doing inspections. We have the Ministry of Environment do annual inspections, we have auditors that are independent that, that we actually, you know, require internal audits and external audits as part of our quality management system. So, a lot of these reports here, we got annual reports, Aqua's annual reports, drinking water quality management, internal and external audits. And generally, all this information will flow through the committees and will flow through council. It may be just a council receive it as part of a committee report, but I think the councillors do have an obligation to keep tabs on what's happening in the water system. So, as staff, we, we take the onus to, to make sure that we're, we're telling council, you know, all the things that are happening, the things they should know about the water system. If there's any problems, we're not shy to say there's a problem and, you know, this is what we need to do and make recommendations to council. And, you know, all of these have financial impacts. The next slide is the sewer use bylaw, so there are strict conditions on what you can flush down a municipal sewer. If you think about it, you know, the normal household contaminants, we can predict, predict what those are based on a lot of data that's produced in municipalities. And the treatment systems are designed to kind of remove those constituents that normally happen from, from a residential property, right? When you get into industrial properties, it's, there's easy, easily, it's easy to have processes that would overload certain parts of our treatment process, like, you know, I think about Smith Falls, they had the Hershey plant and they discharged lots, lots of BOD, like it had a high biological oxygen man on their plant. So, the series bylaw goes through and basically identifies what the limits are for various elements like grease and oil and BOD and COD and all these elements. And, and if an industry exceeds the sewer use bylaw limits, then they have to come and talk to the municipality about doing pre-treatment or entering into an agreement to compensate the municipality for additional processes and, you know, so, so if there's an industry coming to town, we always carefully examine, well, what, what is their discharge going to look like into the centers or because it may upset our process or might be, might not be compatible with our process and might disrupt our process. So, so we have to really look at each industry that's coming into town and determine, is there going to be an impact from the quality side and are there ways to manage it? Do we have to add a process or do we have them do some pre-treatment or whatever? But, that's managed through the sewer use bylaw process. So, there's quite a bit of information, just as a high-level overview there, so just, I don't know if you have any questions of council.
Any questions, Councillor McWherter?
So, manganese, why would you need to update your plant for that?
Why would you need, what, sorry?
Why would you need to update the plant to?
Yeah, so manganese, it was not a constituent that was identified in the raw water in the, in the river. And what happens is, is under low oxygen levels and low flows in the river, then the water, the raw water picks up manganese in the, from the soil that's in the bottom of the river. And because there's no oxygen, it actually imparts manganese into the water itself, right? So, when it comes into the plant, it's dissolved, like if you look at it, it looks like a clear jar of water, right? And then the processes that we have before filtration doesn't react with the manganese. So, then the manganese actually goes right through our filters and then basically, once it gets into our clear wells, then starts reacting with the chlorine that we're mandated to put in. say there's a problem and, uh, you know, this is what we need to do and make recommendations to council. And, uh, you know, all of these have financial impacts. Uh, the next slide is the sewer use bylaw. So, so there are strict, uh, conditions on what you can flush down a municipal sewer. Uh, if you think about it, uh, you know, the normal household contaminants, we can predict, predict what those are based on a lot of data that's produced in municipalities. And the treatment systems are designed to kind of remove those constituents that normally happen from, uh, from a residential property, right? When you get into industrial properties, it's, uh, there's easy, easily, uh, it's easy to have processes that would overload certain parts of our, our treatment process. Like, you know, I think about Smith Falls, they had the Hershey plant and they discharged lots, lots of BOD, like it had a high biological oxygen man on their plant. So the series bylaw, uh, goes through and, and basically identifies what the limits are for various elements like grease and oil and BOD and COD and, and all these elements. And, uh, and if an industry exceeds the sewer use bylaw limits, then they, they have to come and talk to the municipality about doing pre-treatment or entering into an agreement to compensate the municipality for additional processes. And, you know, so, uh, so if there's an industry coming to town, we, we always carefully examine, well, what, what is their discharge going to look like, uh, into the sanitary sewer? Because it may upset our process or might be, and might not be compatible with our process and might disrupt our process. So, so we have to really, uh, look at each industry that's coming into town and determine, is there going to be an impact from the quality side? And are there ways to manage it? Do we have to add a process? Or do we have them do some pre-treatment or, or whatever? But, uh, that's managed through the sewer use bylaw, uh, process. So there's quite a bit of information, just as a high level overview there. So just, I don't know if you have any questions of council.
Any questions, Councilman McQuarrie?
Uh, so manganese, why would you need to update your plant for that?
Why would you need, what, sorry?
Why would you need to update the plant to?
Yeah. So, so manganese, uh, it was not a constituent that was identified in the raw water in, in the, uh, in the river. And what happens is, is under low oxygen levels and low flows in the river, then the water, the raw water picks up manganese, uh, in the, from the soil, uh, that, that's in the bottom of the river. And because there's no oxygen, it actually imparts manganese into the water itself, right? So when it comes into the plant, it's a dissolved, like it, if you look at it, it looks like a clear jar of water, right? And, uh, then the processes that we have before filtration doesn't react with the manganese. So then the manganese actually goes right through our filters. And then basically, once it gets into our clear wells, then starts reacting with the chlorine that we're mandated to, to put in there. And what happens is, is that given a certain amount of reaction time, a certain amount of manganese, uh, then the manganese actually precipitates. It turns from a, from a dissolved solid or a dissolved liquid into a solid particle that ends up, you know, giving a tint to the water, a brown tint. So what we have to do is we have to add a treatment process because like it's becoming common enough. We've had enough droughts, uh, happening, uh, in, in town here, like spread by five or six or seven or eight years apart, uh, that it causes enough of a problem that we've now considered adding a treatment system to it. And it's not very common for a surface water supply to have manganese, but it, you know, it's possible. And we do have that issue. And the Ontario Clean Water Agency have monitored the manganese levels. So what we're doing is this potassium permanginate system that we're designing will actually, before it gets to the filters, it'll, the potassium permanginate will react with manganese, turn it into a solid, it'll settle and then be filtered out by the filters prior to getting into our treated water supply. Yeah. So, so that's, it's something, it's like a, an evolving issue, I would say.
And that's the reason in the spring we get discovered water?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah.
Any other questions? Councilor Dick?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you made a comment through your presentation and you were, you, you emphasized on it about improvements being made, but then you just stopped. So I'm just wondering what improvements need to be made to the water treatment plant? Because just the way you said it, it just seemed concerning to me that we weren't where we should be.
Uh, no, no, we, we are meeting all the, the regulatory compliance. Generally, uh, we do have from time to time, uh, you know, something like THMs, tri-helamethanes will, will spike. And, and actually, I've been made aware of, uh, you know, one incident that, that we had a tri-helamethane that, that basically was a little higher than normal because we had to add a little more chlorine at the beginning of the system, which caused tri-helamethanes to spike. But generally, we are, we are meeting all the regulatory requirements for a system. Uh, the, the problem we ran into was an aesthetic objective. Uh, so there was basically brown or tinted water. And although it was safe and, and, uh, okay to drink and safe to drink, uh, people don't like tinted water. And I, I can, you know, I understand why. So these improvements that we're looking at making are to, you know, we, we've now been made aware of that problem. It's, it's occurred at a frequency that requires us to add some treatment to our system. So we're, we're going ahead and, uh, and actually implementing this potassium permanginate treatment, uh, to, to address the manganese. So that's, that's specifically what I was talking about. And by, by using potassium permanginate at the front end of our plant, then we don't have to use chlorine to try to, to oxidize the manganese, which then will help the THM issue that we ran into last year. Yeah. So, so, and, and I would say if there's, if there's any issues that arise, we do bring them to your attention as, as staff to council and make you aware because we have an obligation to, to make sure that you're aware of things. Okay?
May I, Councilor Gray?
Through you, Mayor Sidney, to Director Aslan. I just follow up on Councilor Dick's comment there. I'm a little confused. So if, so the browning of the water, like in a bathtub that I see all over Facebook this spring, all you have to do is change your process? Like there's no money or nothing involved is to fix the problem? Is that what you're saying?
Well, every, every process is money, right?
Yeah, okay.
So when we add a process, uh, the potassium permanginate system is in the order of about 375,000.
Okay. So I didn't know what that meant. So, okay.
Okay. So, so they're basically, yeah.
It sounded to me like it was just an easy fix. That's why.
Well, it's, it's, it's a process. We have to design it. We have to fund it in the budget. We have to, uh, you know, get the, the, all the proper approvals. Uh, and then we have to implement it. And there's operational constraints around.
Makes more sense. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
If I can just add, um, the solution is used elsewhere. For instance, Cobden, which takes its water from Muskrat, um, has that system. And then they're looking at the chemical level. We did secure a delegation at Roma with the Minister of Environment to talk about a bunch of issues, including, uh, blue box transition that's coming up a little later, but specifically on this issue of manganese and, uh, as one impact of climate change. So as, as Director Aslan has said, uh, drier weather means that, uh, yeah, it's, it's having an impact on the aesthetics of the drinking water system. So we're following up from that perspective and Mike's team are doing all the due diligence on the engineering side. And you'll see this project in the 2023 budget.
Any other questions? Councilor Dick?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, sorry, I've, I have quite a few questions actually. Um, my first question is, so just so I understand the process, because I never knew this, and I'm sure a lot of the taxpayers in Renfro don't even know this. So the water treatment plant, to confirm, is operated by an outsourced contractor in Ontario Clean Water Agency. So they are not town employees? The town contracts this company out?
That's correct. Yeah. So in 2015, we, uh, we went out for services for, uh, for operations of the treatment plant. And the Ontario Clean Water Agency, we entered into a 10-year contract with them. So there's, there, in Ontario, there's not many providers of independent services for drinking water treatment. There are a couple others. Uh, but, uh, you know, the municipality has to really carefully, uh, you know, examine, uh, when we, when we entertain the operation. So there's choices you can operate yourself. And that means that you have to have all the, uh, the proper credited and licensed staff to do it. And you have to have the, sort of the administration behind it to support it, to, to guarantee that you're going to, uh, meet compliance, right? Or you outsource it. And the, I think Emma Hennessy is going to tell you a little more about the Ontario Clean Water Agency. Uh, similar to the town, they're a not-for-profit organization. So they're not, uh, they're not operating for profit. Um, they, the plant, the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant at one point were operated by the Ministry of Environment. Okay? And it was very, very common that the Ministry of Environment actually operated the plants. And then they, they got into a conundrum where they were the, the, uh, the, they were operators, but they were also the approval agency. So that kind of put them in a little bit of a conflict where they, they, they found it difficult to, to administer water treatment services in Ontario and they were operating a bunch of plants in Ontario. So that's when, uh, this Ontario Clean Water Agency got created to be an independent arm of the, uh, of the government. So they were no longer directly related to the Ministry of Environment. And they were, they were more accountable for the services that they provide. And the ministry could then look at enforcement and, and, uh, look at, uh, you know, the approvals and in a different manner than, than if they were operating their own plants.
Thank you, Director Aslan. Uh, this is a, this is a nice, easy question for you. It's probably just going to be yes or no. Um, so you were talking about when you, uh, replace all the sewer and the drains and all that, and you're, you're putting drain water and then you're putting sewer pipes through and you were explaining all that. Does that cost go towards our water bills? The taxpayer waters bills? Or is that included in when you put in a bid and all that stuff?
Yeah. So that, uh, that would be included in the, the storm water control would be included in the tax budget. So water pays for the water system and water distribution, water treatment and metering and what have you. Uh, the sanitary, uh, the sanitary charges pay for sanitary sewers, pump stations, uh, wastewater treatment. And, uh, and taxation pays for storm water, roads, sidewalks and, and all those elements. So every time we do a project, it's a little bit of a judge, juggling act because there's some, usually some water, some sewer, some storm, some roads. And then we have to, in the budgeting process, we have to kind of divide the project up into different pots and, and fund it. And on top of that, we do get funds from the province. We get, uh, you know, OSEF funding. And, uh, so then we have to, you know, sort of apply those funds to certain elements of the project. And, you know, sometimes we get federal, uh, federal funding and the federal funding is specific to water projects. So then we can take that specific funding and apply it to the water. So there's, there's not a, a real direct formula. It's, it's more, uh, we have needs in our system. Uh, we have various revenue sources. We have grants and we have to try to match them up to, uh, you know, and we also have, uh, as you, as you're aware, we have needs to replace roads. So when you replace the road, then you've got to look at the underground and figure out, you know, do you have enough money to, uh, to do what you need to do and, uh, without affecting the water rates and sewer rates and taxation? And, uh, you know, so there's a lot of com-, like it's, it's a fairly complicated, uh, process to, uh, to plan the capital. Because, uh, you know, you, you may, you may have grants to support the road, but then it'll cause, uh, cause you to, uh, to generate some sewer or water replacements that you'll have to try to figure out how you're going to pay for those. Right?
Thank you.
If that makes any sense to you.
So I still don't have my answer. If it's yes or no, like, I apologize.
It's no, because it's paid in taxation.
Perfect.
And just to be clear, by law, we can't, water must pay for water. So water must pay for water per legislation. Technically, taxation can pay for sewer, but it's heavily discouraged. Just back to the Aqua question, everybody in Renfro County gets Aqua to do their plants minus Bonnashire Valley. So I think for most, unless I'm wrong, unless I'm missing somebody.
Like, our employer will operate their own. There's, but, but the, amongst the private providers, Ontario Clean Water Agency and then Emma can, uh, expand on this, but out of Ontario, I think they got the, the majority share of, uh, operation contracts in, in Ontario.
It's, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't want you to take my questions like the way Rob jumped in there, CEO Rob. My questions aren't to get someone or that, it's, it's information because I need, I need to understand this. So when the shareholders of the town come to me and ask these questions, I have the answers for them, right? So I don't want you to think when I'm asking questions, I'm, I'm attacking or anything like that. It's all knowledge.
No, that's right.
Okay. So I do have one last question.
One more.
One more? Thank you. Uh, bylaw, 411981, you, you stated it's not actively enforced. Who, why and who enforces that? I'm just confused.
This is the serious bylaw. So, so that, it is enforced, uh, we don't have a team of people going out to all the industries and, and monitoring and sampling. So that was what was meant by that. So, so we do work with the industries. If we're having any issues with our treatment systems or, uh, you know, then we do follow up with, with the industries to, to figure out what's going on. But then we don't have a team of people going out to sample, uh, the industry locations to, you know, to determine compliance with this bylaw. That would, that would require significantly more resources. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if I could just add to, uh, before we go on to the next one about Aqua, I think we're going to hear something from them down the road tonight that you will be very grateful they are here because there's a law piece in there that you don't know how tight we're attached to it. So we, uh, we're very grateful to have them because, uh, the, the act specifically says where legislation and who's responsible for what. So, um, with that, I will, uh, I guess Director Aslan, you just gonna?
Yeah. So, uh, so the next component, uh, thank, thanks, uh, Mayor Sidney. So the next component is the council orientation on the, uh, Renfro Water and Wastewater Treatment Operations. And we'll have Austin, uh, come up to the, uh, come up to the desk there and then he can give a presentation on the, uh, on the treatment side of things. And, uh, then there'd be an opportunity for questions as well.
Great. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Austin.
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name's Austin Mitchell. I'm the, uh, Operations Manager for the Water and Wastewater Treatment Plants within the town of Renfro. Um, if we can just pop up the slideshow, I'll just quickly walk through that with everyone. Again, it is a high-level overview. Uh, what I will offer for everyone, if anyone after this meeting, um, wants to do an in-depth tour of each of the plants, I'd be happy to take anyone through and just kind of give them a more of an educational perspective and, uh, more of a hands-on feel to what, uh, we're going to talk about tonight. That's perfect. Thank you. So, uh, through the mayor, um, slide number one that you see on your PowerPoint, it just talks about some acronyms and some of the, um, definitions you might hear tonight. So I don't need to, I won't read through them, but they are just there for information purposes to slide back to. Um, so a maximum allowable concentration is just what the maximum allowable concentration, whether it's chlorine, fluoride is allowed in the water. Um, AWQI would be an adverse water quality incident, um, as Mike talked about. So a THM overage would be an AWQI that's reportable to the Ministry of Environment. Um, OREG is just your Ontario Regulations, as most of everyone's familiar with. Uh, CT is a chlorine and contact time within the clear well. So we have our, uh, water that's in the clear well. It has to be in that clear well for a certain amount of time to provide dis-infection credits and be safe to be, uh, pumped to the distribution system. Um, NTUs are what our turbidity units are. So that's essentially the clarity of the water. So if you hold the glass of water, the more cloudy it is, the higher the NTU. So you want to keep your NTUs low for a nice clear, clear water going into the system. Our permit to take water is how much water we're allowed to actually take out of the Bonnashire on a given day. Um, so you cannot exceed that permit to take water. Whenever you get closer to the higher end of your permit to take, that's when you got to reevaluate, um, and go for approvals. That is renewed every, every five years. And we just had that permit to take renewed, uh, just last year. Municipal drinking water license. So that's, uh, your drinking water license explains everything that your treatment plant does, um, or what's, what's within that treatment system itself. Uh, BWA, you don't want to hear this one. It's a boil water advisory. So that typically occurs when a big main break is sheared or, and there's been a negative pressure within the system. Um, so those, uh, those ones you don't want to see. And then cubic meter, any flows I'm going to say tonight are in cubic meters. So if you want them converted to liters, just anything I say times by a thousand. So it's more just a conversion measure. So I just threw that in the start just so everyone's on the same page. Uh, the next slide just speaks to our 2021 Ministry Inspection Rating. We had a 97.12. Um, unfortunately, where the 2.88% fell through was just a missed sample from the distribution side of things for, uh, total alkalinity. Uh, there's no further action required as, uh, the town and Director Aslan has set up, uh, sample schedule. And, uh, I look calendars for reminders to ensure those samples aren't missed. They have to be sampled, uh, every quarter. And I think it was just missed one quarter. So just to show us the one little simple mistake can lead to, uh, quite a detrimental effect. So we do, uh, try and adhere to all those. Otherwise, I'm pretty confident it would have been 100% inspection rating for the 2021. We haven't yet had our 2022 inspection. Uh, we typically get announced that by the ministry. So we're just kind of sitting ducks waiting to hear for that. I know they, uh, have some staffing issues as well. So we're just waiting to hear from that. But I, it'll probably be Q1 for 2023, which they'll look back on all our 2022 documentation and operations and, uh, continue on, which will also be brought to council once that's completed. So the next slide, I just have a little, uh, quick process overview. Again, I'm going to keep it high level, but I will talk about, uh, some raw water characteristics as Mike's already touched on. Um, so the source for the Renfro Drinking Water System is the Bonnashire River. The low lift pumping station, which was constructed over the wet well, it's situated next to the Bonnashire across from the water treatment plant at 224 McCandry Avenue. Just diagonally across, there's a fenced in area which leads down to the riverbed. And that's where raw water supplied to the plant. So it's pumped across the road. Um, it should be noted that during seasonal change, uh, low river flow or lack of precipitation can present increased organics in the river, which can be more difficult to treat, i.e. manganese. That's just where we see that brownish color during certain times of the year. Uh, manganese concentrations in the source water, uh, have been shown to increase relatively significantly in the spring and during extended periods of dry weather in the summer. Not all the soluble manganese in the raw water is removed by the existing water treatment process prior to distribution. And when the treated water is exposed to free chlorine, uh, during disinfection, the soluble manganese oxidizes to yield the reddish-brown precipitate that can readily stain plumbing fixtures and laundry. As noted, where you saw the Facebook posts this, uh, this spring that we were also monitoring and unfortunate to see. Um, in addition to the, uh, elevated concentrations of the manganese can have undesirable impacts on taste. And although this is not a health-related concern, the aesthetic issues are undesirable and typically result in numerous customer complaints. Um, this saw, this summer, we saw a dramatic increase in manganese. Uh, we saw our source water get as high as 0.471 milligrams per liter, which is quite high. The aesthetic objective in, uh, for federal regulations is 0.02. So just those comparisons, we had quite, uh, quite an issue to help to try and treat it. Um, so the town and Aqua, uh, we're working closely with Mike and some engineering consultants, uh, regarding the implementation of a potassium permanginate system to help precipitate that, um, manganese out of the water and be removed via filtration, which, uh, which will help improve customer, uh, consumer confidence in the drinking water provided to all the residents. So moving along to treatment. So raw water is then treated with, uh, coagulants, uh, coagulant, which helps bind all the solids together to help remove them out of the water, create their density higher than water. And it's removed, uh, via filtration. Um, so the water's then directed to flash mixers where coagulation and polymer injected. And we convey through our active flow treatment system, which is like our sedimentation side of things. Uh, water is then directed to three dual media. So the media is, uh, consists of sand and anthracite, uh, through high rate gravity filters. All three filters are connected to a common backwash system that includes a filter. All three filters are connected to a common backwash system that includes a filter to waste valving, backwash troughs, and underdrain system. So each filter requires it to be backwashed, similar to your pool, pool filters. So the backwash to take out the organics and continue, continue through the process. Filtered water is then treated with chlorine gas for disinfection. We use hydrated lime to adjust the pH to be to closest, closer to seven as we can. And we use hydrofluoric acid to add the fluoride to the water, which is regulated and required by the local health units. So there's two baffled clear walls in use. We do have approximately four thousand cubic meters of storage just at the water treatment plant itself. So once that water's ready for the distribution system, our high lifts pump, pump it to the distribution system, which then fills the standpipe. We can move on to, yes, the, just the flow. So just for a screenshot of what the rate of capacity at the water plant is, it's eighteen thousand one-hundred-and-eighty-four cubic meters per day. That's what we are allowed to put out. So our average daily flow was three-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-one, which means we're only using twenty percent of our rate of capacity. So that's good news to know that we don't have to expand the volume that we can treat, just as Mike touched on, just some certain processes to help polish it and make it as best, as best we can for all the consumers. Sliding over to the wastewater plant overview. Wastewater enters a water pollution control plant through two influent channels, one equipped with a mechanical screen and one with equipped with a manual screen. The manual screen is there for if the flow has ever exceeded what the automatic bar screen can do, it goes into a manual bar screen. It's also used for maintenance purposes if the bar screen was getting maintained or, or overhauled. The screening system is then equipped with one screenings washer and compactor, so as all the rags and debris are taken out of the water, it's compacted into a bin, which is used for off-site disposal. Influent then enters two aerated grit tanks, which remove any sand, selt, rocks that get down the drain too, so it doesn't harm any downstream processes or pumps. Goes to a wet well, then pumped to the biological treatment process, which is three, two, three-pass aeration tanks with a five, fine bubbler aeration system. So this is where your microbiological system takes place, removes the organics from the water. And then it goes to secondary clarifiers where that sludge has settled out. There's a return activated sludge, so a lot of that sludge is returned to keep those microbiological organisms alive. And some is wasted off into the, our aerobic digesters. So the sludge is in the aerodigester to get broken down, and we centrifuge that. And as I'm sure Amanda will talk to you later, it's sent to the landfill, the, the biosolids essentially from the, from the wastewater plant. And then for, after secondary clarifiers, it goes through UV disinfection. So all the organisms and viruses are, are killed prior to entering the Bonneishire River. Just to touch on some of our results that we get weekly from our weekly sampling. So our MECP limit on CBOD, for example, our typical results, ninety-nine percent of the time are less than three milligrams per liter. Suspended solids are less than three milligrams per liter. Total phosphorus average is point zero-nine. Ammonia is less than one, and our ECOI is less than five, coliform units per a hundred. So as Mike said, you can, as our wastewater discharges into the Bonneishire, you can essentially see in clear, clean water pushing away some of the, some of the not-so-clean water in the Bonneishire as we can see at times. So we do have a, a great wastewater treatment plant that puts out phenomenal effluent. So we are pretty proud to see the operation there and what, what that plant can handle, so. That's pretty well it from my operations update. Oh, so sorry to touch on the flows there. So again, we're at, we're at approximately thirty percent rate of capacity of the plants. The town has done a good job separating sewers, and we have seen a very big reduction. Just this past weekend with the snow melt and heavy rain, we did not have a bypass. Plant handled it just fine. I think we got up to around thirty-five thousand cubic meters. And the plant's rated for just, just shy of fifty thousand cubic meters. So with some of these severe wet weather events we're seeing, we are seeing this plant handle it just fine. So again, there's just more some work on the water side to polish up some of the treatment side and make it more aesthetically objective for the consumers. So that's a high-level overview. And again, I'd be more than happy to take any, any members of the public or council through the plants just to give them more of an educational and experience to see the plants.
Thank you very much. I think it's pretty in-depth of what has to be done to, to get the water to be drinkable and stuff. So I'd like to, any questions from council? Hearing none. Oh, sorry, Reeve Eman.
Question, just acknowledging Ms. Hennessy and Mr. Trader. On behalf of the Ontario Winter Games, thank you very much for being a sponsor. I was on one of those Zoom calls a long time ago with you. And they have donated five thousand metal water bottles for all of our participants coming up in two weeks' time because that was part of our sustainability goal, which was not to produce plastic or use plastic. So the idea is to use the metal water bottles to fill up that source, which there's a lot of events here in town, so we're proud of our water. So thank you very much for that. I didn't have the opportunity to acknowledge that earlier.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Director Aslan?
Yeah, thanks. No, I, I just wanted to, like, if there's no more questions, I, I just wanted to thank, thank Austin. And, you know, we have a very close working relationship between our distribution operators and the, and the Clean Water Agency and the operations staff there. You know, last year, we, we took our water tower out of service, and there was a lot of coordination required to make sure that the, you know, the operations were maintained, and it took constant effort. So, so they do a good job in, in working with our staff, and, you know, we, we often call upon them. Like, if, you know, they may be losing water, we may be having a leak, and we want to find out how severe it is. So, so we'll talk to them. The, the plants are great in that they, they record a lot of data. Like, they record, you know, flow every second or, you know, many times per second. And if there's something happening in the treatment system with pressure or flows, we can go back to the treatment plant data, and Austin can pull that data and, and help diagnose what's happening in the system. So there's a very close working relationship. So thanks, Austin.
Thank you. And just before you go, back in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, I chaired the Water Rate Review Task Force. And you guys were phenomenal, giving us the information, doing the tours. Just want to let council know that in the very near future, we will be doing tours. So we'll be reaching out to, to do that because you, you have to actually see it to really grasp the work that goes into it. And, and I appreciate all the work that you guys do do, so thank you for that. So with that, we'll go on to water agency standard of care. So Director Aslan, do you wanna?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just say thank you to Austin again, and, and Emma Hennessy is, is, works with the Ontario Clean Water Agency and looks after our contracts, and, and she'll be, you know, speaking more of the administrative end of things. And, and we've worked with them, Emma, for, since I got here in two thousand and five. I think you, you were working back then, were you?
No, I started in two thousand and nine.
Oh, two thousand and nine. So I guess John Kingsbury was the guy we dealt with before you. So anyway, Emma, carry it and take it away.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for inviting us here tonight. You won't see me very often. I really am on the business side of things. So I do come around after an election to talk about the standard of care or at the time of contract renewal. Those are times when I would more likely come and present to council. Otherwise, you'll see Austin. I am at all of the industry conferences, though, so I, I will see you at Roma, and feel free to come by and say hi. So I am here tonight just to give you the overview of who we are, how we work with the town of Renfrew, what we do to protect your assets and manage your risk, and then looking at the Safe Drinking Act responsibilities that council has. Next slide, please. So the Ontario Clean Water Agency, as Director Aslan said, was created in nineteen ninety-three under the Capital Investment Plan Act. Prior to that, the ministry of the environment did own most of the facilities, transferred ownership to municipalities, and created Aqua so that we could be regulated, essentially. They couldn't, they couldn't police themselves. So that was the idea behind that. So we are a crown corporation. We do report to the Ministry of the Environment Conservation and Parks, but we do so at arms-length. Next slide, please. So we are uniquely set up as a self-sufficient cost recovery public agency. We do not receive any funding from the government. All of our funding is through the contracts that we have across the province of Ontario. We have contracts with municipalities, industry, First Nations, and private sector. So we offer the best of both worlds as a public agency, operating for the public good with you as the owner, yet efficiently as a private company that doesn't receive that operating funding from the, from the province. We do have a huge depth of resource behind us through our corporate office and our different programs that we have. I'll discuss some of those a little bit later. And one of the things that you can do is that you can sleep at night because you can trust that you have a government-owned agency operating your systems with the thought of, sorry, with the thought that we're here to protect the environment and not bottom-line-driven. We do operate as well under a shared service model. The town benefits from that because we operate at a regional level as well as at a cluster level. So Andy is from the regional office, and we have certain resources like compliance and business management at that level that you can access. And at the cluster level, we have staff that operate facilities here in town as well as in surrounding towns so that we can draw from those resources as needed. For instance, you might not have an electrician, an electrician full-time in your plant here. We have one for the cluster, and we can send him around as needed. So from that shares, shared services model perspective, it is sharing people, but we also share resources, like we have a boom truck that we can send around the cluster or around the province, rather than having to have every client own their own boom truck if needed. Next slide, please. So you are located in our Mississippi cluster. We have three municipalities. It is the town of Renfrew, the town of Carlton Place, and the municipality of Mississippi Mills. You have four staff that are dedicated to the town, plus the additional administrative and compliance support that we have in the cluster. And part of our, our eastern region, which you can see there, is twenty-three municipalities, First Nation and industrial and commercial. That shared service model as well also promotes bulk purchasing. So we can buy services such as calibration services on a cluster level and also do our, our chemical procurement on a cluster level or a regional level as needed. Next slide, please. So our main, our main business is operations and maintenance of water treatment plants. However, we do have other services that we offer through our corporate office, such as asset management. You did access that. We were working with a consultant on your asset management plan. We have energy and process optimization teams. We have resource recovery team looking at biosolids and energy recovery right now across the province. We have a conveyance services team that can bring in specialty services for your collection and distribution system as needed. We have the IT tools, a work management system, a computerized maintenance management system, as well as trading programs, and government support for applications. You know, we do provide you with a lot of information to support your applications. And on an as-needed basis, we do have engineers who can work on those, those applications with you. We do have a small financial and capital planning support as well team. So just a quick look at who your management team is at the regional level. So Angie is here with us tonight. We have Vanessa as a safety, process, and compliance manager. Austin, you see myself. We have a business manager and a capital works manager as well, so we all support Austin and his needs in the town here. And the next slide, this is just a look at the cluster level. We have all these staff working in the clusters. As I said, four of them are dedicated, four of the green ones are dedicated to your facilities, but we can draw on them in emergency cases or, you know, like I said, the electrician can be brought in around when we're doing something like operating a water tower twenty-four-seven. We might bring staff in from other facilities to, to help support that because we can't expect for people to operate something twenty-four-seven long-term. You will note that there are two vacant positions on the board right now. We are in the process of hiring those people right now. So interviews have happened, and Austin's working on that.
I'll be awarding those tomorrow, actually.
Oh, good. Next slide, please. So just to give you a look at like day-to-day activities, I know Austin went through a detailed look at kind of what your, your process is. But, you know, our, our, our staff on a day-to-day basis work to make sure that those facilities are operated efficiently and reliably. And we're providing safe water for your consumers to drink and environmentally responsible water returned to the, to the, to the environment. To manage these day-to-day activities, we do have, like I said, a computerized maintenance management system, a work management system. We have standard operating procedures to make sure that the, the facilities are operated correctly. We have twenty-four-hour contingency plans for emergencies or unusual circumstances. And as I said, we use that work management system. It's a maximal-based platform, and we use it to track, schedule, and document all of the maintenance activities in your plant. So we can provide that information in spreadsheet format to Director Aslan anytime he needs it. Next slide, please. So Aqua as a whole, you know, we consider ourselves part of your community. As Reeve Eman said, he reached out to us to support the Ontario Winter Games, and we were very happy to do so. So we, we do have those bottles, and I had one for you, and I forgot it. So next time. Yeah, they only sent me one. Yeah. If you volunteer, you'll get one. It's my little help there. Corporate-wide, we do have education programs. We have a one-water education program that we bring to the grade-eight curriculum. So it is a program that was in the schools prior to COVID, and then unfortunately, we had to stop, just as many other things did. So we did take the time to revamp it, and we will be relaunching it in the fall of twenty-twenty-three. So we do, it fits in with the grade-eight curriculum, and it's a program where our operators go into the classroom and teach the students about, about how we treat the water and the environmental responsibilities. So we will be reaching out to local schools to, to possibly do that next fall. We also have an I Don't Flush public awareness campaign. It is idontflush.ca. You can find us on Twitter and Facebook, and that is about what you don't flush down the pipes to, because I'm sure you've all seen the fatbergs in the news. You know, we don't want to flush grease. We want to flush the three Ps. You can guess what those are. So we do have a campaign that we, that we focus on those items and messages. Went really strong over Christmas with it to make sure people didn't flush gravy down the drain. So you can link to that onto your own website if you wish, idontflush.ca. We also have another one that's specific to Aqua, just called Protect Your Pipes. So we can work with you to put flyers into your water bills, if you like, that type of idea to go with that one. And then just, you know, locally, we did participate in the annual Bluegrass Festival and your Canada Day festivities. We have a water buggy, we call it, which is a water bottle refill station. We have a large one, and we have small ones that we bring to festivals around the province to encourage people to not drink plastic water bottles and to refill on-site at festivals and events. So we can bring that on an as-needed basis. So speaking to our contract specifically, as Director Aslan said, we signed it in January of twenty-fifteen, and it expires in December of twenty-twenty-five. It is a cost-plus type of agreement, which means that you pay the actual cost to operate your facilities plus a management fee. That management fee is subject to CPI on an annual basis. The, the operations estimate is what we call the, the actual cost. You receive an estimate prior to the start of each year. At the end of the actual operating year, we will reconcile the, what you paid against what it actually cost us to operate the plant. And you will either receive a credit or a debit invoice, depending on how the year went. I believe that we've been pretty close on throughout the past few years in, in budgeting, so we've been doing very well. So the other thing that we do is on an annual basis, we do provide you with a list of recommended major maintenance and capital projects for the following six or ten years. Ten years. Legislation says six years, but we try and do better than that, so on a ten-year basis. So every year, we update for the following ten years that recommended activities that need to be done on your facilities to give you the, the time to budget and plan for those. Next slide, please. So now we're gonna move into the regulatory environment. Director Aslan has already touched on this. Ontario is one of the most complex regulatory regimes in the whole wide world. We have had visits from different countries coming to visit Ontario to, to explore our, our regulations because of the, the safety measures that we have in place. They are known worldwide. So at Aqua, we do have a comprehensive quality and environmental management system. We have occupational health and safety systems and an emergency management program in place to meet all of the regulations. The services agreement that we have makes clear our responsibilities as well as yours. The services agreement that we have makes clear our responsibilities as well as yours and also how we have to comply with those regulations together. So through the next slides, I am going to touch on the Standard of Care Act and the regulations around the province. So this slide kind of gives you a look at what used to be in play and how it looks now. So if you look at the Ontario Water Resources Act that was in play before Walkerton, there were two kind of regulations underneath it, and the Health Protection Act had one. And then Walkerton happened, and now we have the Safe Drinking Water Act, which has all of these other components underneath it to regulate water in Ontario. I'm just going to read a little bit, read it from my page because it's technical. So the Ontario Regulation 169 outlines the acceptable drinking water quality for various parameters like arsenic, fluoride, lead, and nitrates. And then Ontario Regulation 170 outlines the drinking water system requirements in terms of treatment, chemical water sampling, operational tasks, continuous monitoring equipment, and compliance and reporting. Ontario Regulation 128 is what certification requirement is required for operators. And then there are other components as well as the regulations that are established. So the Drinking Water Works Permit, the municipal drinking water license, as Austin already mentioned, so I'll skip over that stuff. All of these were implemented in order to provide a multi-barrier approach to providing safe, clean drinking water to the public. If you have a look at Justice O'Connor's report, that was his goal, was to implement these multi-barrier approaches so that, you know, if one thing fails, you're not going to have an outbreak. It would take three things to fail for you to have an outbreak. So these things were really important in his report, if you have a look at those. Finally, Ontario Regulation 319 was implemented in 2008 to capture the smaller drinking water systems like community centers, municipal offices, fire halls, and so on. So that's that for that slide there. So we can move on. So this is direct, a quote from Justice O'Connor, Part II of his Walkerton inquiry. It does state that, "Given that the safety of drinking water is essential for public health, those who discharge the oversight responsibilities of the municipality should be held to a statutory standard of care." So for clarification, as the owners, that's you as council and the mayor, as well as your senior staff who make decisions on your water treatment system. That's who this act applies to. Next slide, please. So the act extends legal responsibility to every person with decision-making authority over the system. So you're not expected to be an expert in the areas of drinking water management and treatment. Section 19 does allow for a person to rely in good faith on the report of an engineer, lawyer, accountant, or other person whose professional qualifications lend credibility to the report. And that's where we come in for you. You know, we are your operating authority, so you can rely on the reports that we provide to you, the information that we provide to you, and act in good faith based on that information that will protect you under the Safe Drinking Water Act. So direct from the guide, there's a guide I'll talk about in a little bit. You should be able to say that you're familiar with the requirements of the Safe Drinking Water Act, that you have toured your municipality's drinking water system, that you understand the scope of your municipality or operating authority's day-to-day responsibilities, and that you have reviewed the MECP's Guide for members of municipal councils. Next slide, please. I have put the link to that guide on the bottom of this slide. I highly recommend that you read it. It does give you very good information about what your responsibilities are. It also gives you questions that you can ask so that you understand it a little bit better. So take some time and go and have a look at that. And if you're interested, there are other training courses available through the Walkerton Clean Water Agency and some other providers that you can take as well that provide more information. I'm doing a very high-level look today. The Walkerton course is three hours long. I think I've done this one in 15 minutes before, so. Next slide, please. So this is where Mayor Sidney was talking about your responsibilities. So you can end up being charged, and the maximum penalty includes up to $4 million fine and potential imprisonment for up to five years. These penalties would be decided by the courts. So this is personal liability. It is not your liability as a councillor. So your insurance that the municipality has may not actually cover you personally if anything like Walkerton happened in the town of Renfrew at any point. So it is very important that you read the reports that you get, that you listen to the information that you're provided, and that you ask questions to make sure you understand the decision that you're making and the impacts that it could have positively and negatively on your residents. Next slide, please. So I already did say this, that you can rely on good faith on a report of an engineer, lawyer, accountant, or other person. In the act, it does say that you need to act honestly, competently, and with integrity. So I think it's fair to say that in the province of Ontario, you know, our municipal councils are pretty regimented and that you are acting with those three things in mind. So as your operating authority, you know, we are accepting some of the risk of operating your facilities, some of those risks and liabilities. So that is the benefit of having us there. We have to be licensed. We're fully trained. We're monitored very closely by the province. Those things help you make the right decisions for your residents while relying on someone else. So we're taking some of that risk and liability for you. That's pretty much it. I did, like I said, very high-level and go very quickly. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? Reeve Eman?
Two questions. I recall in 2014, I think we had someone come and do a two-hour presentation, and then we had a mini-exam afterwards. Is that something we'll be doing again as counsel?
I don't think that decision has been made, Director Aslan.
Yeah, I would say that there's standard care presentations prepared by the Walkerton Clean Water Center. That's that sort of two hours. So I guess, based on what you heard tonight, I guess you could talk to Rob about arranging, you know, that training if you would like. But it just goes into depth in all these elements that MA has spoken about. And I would just add as well, you know, as staff, you know, we're, these responsibilities extend to us as senior managers as well. So we're not shy to come out and identify a need, you know, doesn't matter how politically sensitive it might be. If there's a need in the system, we'll tell you about it. And, you know, if there's a hard decision that needs to be made, we'll bring it to council and tell you what the implications are. So essentially, it, you know, goes right from the certification of operators all the way to, you know, the simplest of things. But we take our business very seriously. Ontario Clean Water Agency does as well, and anything that we're aware of, we bring to council because there are very serious considerations if you don't.
And a second question through you to the CEO. Based on the information on slides 15, 17, and 18, is it safe to assume that any recommendations and reports are accepted by bylaw?
The old adage is anything that's legislatively required would be done by bylaw or resolution. And then we do a resolution, and the confirmatory bylaw, if you're wondering why we do that, is to wrap everything up. What we have to ensure is in our standing committee model that anything goes to standing committee, and yes, you take an in-depth look, but that all of council sees that information. And staff, I mean, we could be held liable as well. So we're all in this together. As Counselor Dick was saying, in terms of questions, these are very complicated matters that it's difficult to explain to the general public. So it's even from our perspective to explain it to you. So we have great resources and partners in Aqua. And just to follow up on the question, I'll have Carolyn and the clerks' team send out the link to the online course so that you can take it on your own time. I don't believe that any of the, we looked last fall if somebody would bring it in-house, and I don't think that was really going to happen. But this gives you enough of an overview so that when you get into that, you have some context to go by. But yes, so it's important to document those reports and do that at the standing committee, and those will rise to council.
I'll just add on to that if I can through you, Mr. Mayor. We do have a course in Petawawa on February 2nd. You're welcome to join. I'm just confirming the venue right now, so once I have that, I'll send out the invitation. And there is a plan for Aqua to hold an online session with Walkerton, so a virtual session. I'm just not sure of that date yet. But those ones, you're welcome to join us. That's at no cost to you. If you go through Walkerton yourself, there is a fee. So I'll just get that information through Director Aslan and Mr. Tremblay.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Director Aslan?
Yeah, I was just going to add, and MA didn't really touch on it, but the Ontario Clean Water Agency in Toronto, they have numerous experts in all kinds of different topics. We've worked very closely with the group in Toronto. We actually participated in a client advisory board, which basically helped, you know, the municipality talk to Aqua about how they can serve their customers better and their clients better, as well as many of the special initiatives that they have. So they have other resources that they tap in corporately that we benefit from as well. And you hear on the news, like if there's a water issue in Canada, essentially First Nations issues, you often hear the Ontario Clean Water Agency has been called upon to go in there and provide guidance. In Walkerton, when they had the problems, Ontario Clean Water Agency went in and kind of did what they need to do. They're regarded in the world as experts in their operations, and they have different levels of support depending on what we need from them. So I think we're in good answer. So, thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. I just want to add, too, that, you know, when we talked about the post on social media about the color of the water, I just think this is a really important presentation that we get, and you can understand the depth that has to go into our water to become clean and drinkable. So when the next time you see a post on there that the color of the water isn't great, just keep in mind that it is safe, because if not, you're about a $4 million fine or five years in jail. So we're on it. So it's a very important thing. So I just want to thank you for coming and giving us that information. It was great. I can't believe you probably have a very stressful job. I wouldn't want it, but I appreciate you doing it. Thank you.
I was going to add, too, whenever you see those posters, several people at the water treatment plant trying to rectify it as well. So we are doing our best to keep it.
Yeah, absolutely. No, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for the kind words.
Thanks.
All right. On to C5, two environmental issues initiatives. Director Aslan?
Yeah, sure. So thanks to the Aqua Group, and you're free to go if you like, or you could sit through the meeting if you like. But certainly, now we're going to sort of turn from the water and wastewater side more onto the environmental issues with waste management. And we have Amanda Springer here, who's going to run us through her presentation.
Thank you, Director Aslan. So we're going to start off with waste management. And waste management in Renfrew is governed locally by our Waste Management bylaw. It was last updated in 2021, and it sets out the rules regarding curbside pickup, landfill use, and also sets the fees and fines. Next slide. We do have curbside collection. The town has a contract for curbside collection of household garbage, recycling, and leaf and yard waste with Tops Environmental Solutions. And this is part of a joint agreement with Armpryor, McNabb, Brayside, and Horton. We have a little over a year remaining on the garbage contract and seven months more with the recycling contract, at which time Renfrew will transition to the full producer responsibility recycling model. And I'll go over this a little bit more in the next two slides. The curbside collection at multi-residential properties has always historically been problematic just due to the large quantity of waste that gets produced and lack of storage areas. And currently, we do not have an organized recycling program for large multi-residential buildings. Next slide. So a bit more about the Blue Box transition. In 2016, the provincial government passed the Resource Recovery and Circular Economy Act, which overhauled the province's waste diversion programs by implementing a producer responsibility framework and circular economy model that focuses on reusing, repairing, recycling, and remanufacturing materials over disposing them. The legislation puts the responsibility of the program on the producer, including all costs to collect and transport materials. The program has been successful for single-use batteries, tires, paints, cleaners, and e-waste, among other products. Starting in July 2023 through till January 1st, 2026, materials typically recycled through the Blue Box program will transition to this model, with all municipalities being fully transitioned by the beginning of 2026. Renfrew is one of the first municipalities to start transition. Our transition date is July 28th, 2023, and we will transition at the same time as Armpryor and McNabb, Brayside. The legislation only requires producers to be responsible for Blue Box materials from residential properties, schools, and long-term care homes. Blue Box materials from commercial, industrial, and private institutional properties such as churches are not included in the producer responsibility framework. Next slide. So what does this mean for Renfrew? So as of July 28th, 2023, the town will no longer administer or pay for the curbside Blue Box program for residential homes and some institutional properties. Circular Materials is a producer responsibility organization that will do this for Renfrew. They will hold the contract with the curbside collection contractor and the receiving facilities, and they will pay the bills. They will coordinate public education programs, and we will not receive any government funding for recycling or credits from the sale of recyclable material. During the transition period, there is a possibility that we will be able to make a deal with the recycling contractors to pay them to continue curbside service to commercial, industrial, and private institutional properties. But we currently do not know who the contractors will be to proceed with making this deal. After transition is complete on January 1st, 2026, we will need to have separate curbside recycling contracts and separate trucks to collect the industrial, commercial, and private institutional recycling from the residential recycling. It is still not clear how this is going to work. Additionally, we may see a change in the types of material collected, as the list of recyclable materials will be consistent across Ontario, and we might also see a scheduling change. Onto the next slide. Onto our landfill. The town has operated its own landfill since 2019, and the decision to switch from a contractor to internal management was based on cost and quality of operation. The landfill has two full-time unionized employees, and in addition, we also rely on casual workers and staff from other departments to fulfill the staffing needs. The landfill is an unlined, naturally attenuating landfill with an improved fill area of 10 hectares and a total area of 41 hectares. The landfill opened in 1955, and it occupies a natural depression which has since been partially filled. Onto the next slide. As I'm sure a lot of you guys have been to the landfill before, I won't spend too much time here. However, I did want to briefly highlight some of the landfill's features. Since 2005, we have operated a scale which allows us to charge by weight. There's also a multi-level sawtooth sorting and transfer area that allows residents to sort their waste into bins, with the top of the bins being at ground level. We have a garage, and the town owns a compactor and loader that are used exclusively at the landfill. And additionally, the town operates a household hazardous waste depot that we will discuss a little bit more later. Next slide. The landfill has been developed in phases, and we are currently in Phase Four of potentially five phases. The latest data estimates that there is 23 years of landfill capacity left in Phase Four. However, in 2008, there was also estimated that there was 23 years left. If we were sitting here in 2011, I would have told you that we only have 15 years left. And you're likely thinking that doesn't make a lot of sense. So the biggest factor in the lifespan of the landfill is the amount of waste received. And in the last 10 years, the amount of waste received at landfill has been trending down, even though the town's population has remained pretty stable. And this is likely due to an increase in the recycling and diversion programs. Additionally, good operation of the landfill, including proper compaction, grinding of larger items, and conservative use of cover material, can impact landfill consumption. Since the town has taken over operational landfill, we have been able to focus on these operational factors more. Lastly, the quality of data used to estimate landfill capacity is a factor. Technology is always changing, and this past year, we completed a drone survey of the landfill, which will provide us with a better understanding of our landfill shape, the size, and the capacity than we could have with a traditional survey. The Phase Five is not yet approved, and we would require to submit an updated design and operational plan, as well as an updated hydrological survey, to the Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks. As these approvals can take a number of years, we are starting to think about proceeding with these studies in the near future. Next slide. So in addition to the municipal bylaw, the landfill site is required to comply with all provincial regulations and approvals. Most significant of these is an environmental compliance approval, or an ECA. The last update to the ECA was completed The last update to the ECA was completed in 2020, and typically, these approvals get updated or renewed every 10 years. The ECA stipulates the requirements for what kind of waste we can accept, the hours we can operate, the signage, operations, staff training, record-keeping, environmental monitoring and sampling, environmental compliance, reporting, landfill closure or expansion, and also requires the town to establish a contaminant attenuation zone or a CAZ. Next slide. So a bit more on the contaminant attenuation zone. Our landfill has no surface water drainage. Therefore, all water that enters the site either evaporates or infiltrates into the groundwater. Therefore, landfill leachate also infiltrates into the groundwater and contaminates the groundwater, making it unusable for human consumption. Groundwater from the site flows southeast and discharges into the Bonnershire River. The town's official plan designates the area between the landfill and the Bonnershire River as an area of potential leachate impact. It's shown here in the orange hatching. Our ECA requires the town to establish a contaminant attenuation zone in this area by obtaining the groundwater rights for these properties, either by fee simple or by way of groundwater easement. And we are working with lawyers to accomplish this with the first groundwater easement bylaw coming later tonight. Next slide. So in order to meet the requirements of the ECA, the town has retained the services of Golda WSB Consulting, and we have been working with them for many years, and their historical knowledge of the site is extremely valuable. Twice a year, they conduct monitoring and sampling of the wells located at and around the landfill. Every two years, they complete a full site survey, and as I previously mentioned, this was done this year with a drone for the first time. And every year, they prepare a report that is submitted to the MECP. Additionally, they provide guidance on landfill operation and assist with drafting communications to the MECP applying for ECA, and they will also assist us when we come to start applying for Phase Five. Next slide. So our landfill is home to the regional household hazardous waste depot. We have partnered with surrounding municipalities to provide this service during the landfill's regular operating hours from the beginning of May till the end of August. Costs are split between the municipalities based on population. This results in a significantly reduced cost for us and our partner municipalities, along with a longer operating season than we could do on our own. Next slide. So the last waste management item I have for you is the food cycler pilot. In 2022, the town partnered with Food Cycle Science to administer a municipal pilot project using the food cycler electric composting units as an alternative to backyard composting or landfilling of food waste. 100 residents participated in the program, and initial responses are positive. The pilot program recently wrapped up with participants responding to a questionnaire. Data from the program will be available shortly and will be included in a future report to council and/or committee. Go one more slide. Just move on to some other non-waste management-related stuff, although my first slide is on litter. So litter in the town has been problematic, especially around the town's vegetated areas like ravines and high-traffic areas like Regland Street South and as well as the big-box commercial parking lot areas. The Recreation Department historically has hosted a spring community cleanup called Pitchin' Week. And in 2023, the plan is for myself as the environmental officer and the Recreation Department to team up. So hopefully, we can make the event more successful. We also do send out town staff to clean up high-density areas of litter on town property. However, both the community cleanup days and the staff cleanup efforts are short-term solutions, and we are looking for longer-term solutions which may include more community cleanup days, increasing the number of public garbage receptacles, and increasing public education and awareness. Next slide. So on to trees, which are my favorite things. Trees play an important role in our town, providing numerous benefits that cannot be fully quantified. The graphic on the slide just shows a few of these benefits. Parks and Recreation has historically been successful in applying for funding to complete tree planting initiatives. With input from the Parks and Rec Department, I recently applied for funding through Tree Canada to plant approximately 30 to 40 trees in various parks in town. And we will find out if we're successful for that funding in a couple months. Other tree planting initiatives I'd like to explore include some tree planting along the Yggdrasil Trail in partnership with the County of Renfrew. Additionally, funding a town right-of-way requested tree program or a backyard tree program to support the long-term greening and support greening of our streetscape. And lastly, one thing I'd like to explore is a public education program, either in the form of an arboretum, which is essentially like a living tree museum, or by adding some informative sides to some of our existing trees in our parks and trails. Next slide. More on some tree stuff. The town is required to have a tree canopy and protection policy, and we are behind on establishing this policy. But you will see a policy come to council for endorsement shortly. There really isn't any set requirements for a policy, but the ones I have reviewed generally include why trees are important to the community, how the town will maintain these trees, how we will incorporate trees and vegetation into new developments, and how we will educate and engage the community. Some other tree-related items that municipalities have put into their tree policies include tree inventories, which is essentially a GIS database of all municipally-owned trees. It includes its location, species size, and health status at a minimum. And this data can be used to monitor tree pests and disease, can be used to plan maintenance and planting activities, or can inform development and city planning. Additionally, some municipalities have a tree protection bylaw or a permitting system which aims to protect trees in construction zones and prevent unauthorized removal of town-owned trees by private residents or set up compensation or replacement requirements for those who are removing trees. Next slide. So a little bit about brownfields and contaminated sites. You might ask what they are. They are properties where past industrial or commercial activities have or may have caused contamination that could cause harm to human health or ecological damage. And then the owners of these properties can be liable for this damage. So there's a couple ways that we can deal with contaminated sites. And it starts with hiring a consultant and complete a series of environmental site assessments, or ESAs, to investigate and document the condition of a site. It starts with a Phase One, where they look at records and visit the site to see if any common contaminating activities are occurring or have occurred in the past. And then if these are identified, a Phase Two is completed, which usually results in an intrusive investigation, often requiring the drilling of monitoring wells and then soil and water sampling. There can also be multiple Phase Twos until the contamination is well-characterized and delineated. And if no contamination is discovered, a record of site condition can be filed to support a sale or development. And if contamination is identified, a risk assessment could be performed to determine the next steps. So some of the town's property that would fall into these categories include the landfill site. However, because it is an active landfill site with an ECA and there's annual monitoring, it doesn't necessarily follow this process. Additionally, we have 550 Hall Avenue, which has gone through this process, and our only obligation is annual indoor air quality monitoring. And lastly, we are proceeding with a Phase One at the Lisgar Public Works Garage, and this will likely result in a Phase Two. Next slide. The last slide I have for you are on biosolids. Biosolids are partially dewatered materials resulting from the treatment of domestic sewage. The wastewater treatment plant produces three to four dump truck loads of this material a week, and it is taken to our landfill site for disposal, where it causes some issues, including taking up a lot of space. It produces greenhouse gases. It's very hard to spread due to the consistency of the material, and it also can cause soft spots and sinkholes that can last for years. Also, although it's digested and treated, it's still pretty gross. So last year, we were awarded partial funding through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Green Fund to undertake a feasibility study to look at alternative options to landfilling. This study is being completed by the Biosolid Specialists at the Ontario Clean Water Agency. Because this material is very nutrient-rich, some of the options being considered are using the material as fertilizer, either for direct land application or to liquefy it, basically. These are not new concepts. Other municipalities do do these things to manage their biosolids. This study is to see what might work best for Renfrew. And the study should be ready in early 2023, but it's likely a few years before we would actually see a new strategy implemented. That's all I have for you. I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. Very informative. Any questions? Reeve Emo?
A question is an observation, and Ms. Springer was much too polite to offer a criticism of the... or at least a comment on the transition. Right now, one of the things that's concerning for us is that the transition would strand, I believe, 219 or 221 stops from our current program going forward to 2026 if we can't strike a deal, and then after 2026. So that's a significant amount of recycling that could end up going back into our landfill site. As well, they haven't been as forthcoming with information about contractors and contracts. We're still a little fuzzy on what happens with residual waste that could go into our landfill site. There's some stranded funding from Stewardship Ontario that is municipal money that I would think that looks like a bit of a shell game being played with it, but we're following it very closely. Councilor McWorder, myself, and the mayor, and the CIO are going to Roma, so there'll be a significant presentation from AMO's expert, which is Dave Gordon. He's been on the file at least 10 years and has tracked it very closely. I think the contract language is now almost straightened out. There was several iterations, and the first 10 weren't very fair to municipalities, but I think it's a little better at this point. So some good news is the pressure is on them to make it work. The pressure has to remain on the government to ensure that they protect municipalities from predatory practices of some of the contractors. And the government doesn't want to hear that, but we've been using that language pretty consistently. Predatory practices, predatory practices. And so I'm hoping the minister hears that a lot at Roma. So just to keep you updated, I'll be bringing back a report to county councils as part of my duties of AMO, and you'll get a copy of it early in February. A couple other very quick questions or just observations. The loader and the dozer, the town, the compactor, I'm sorry. The town owns those, and we have about 17 years left on adventure. We had to purchase those, and it was about $1 million, I think, to set it up. So we still have that on the books. In terms of forestry, Rob Keane from Forests Ontario is either announcing, I'm hoping I'm not letting the cat in the bag, or has announced an urban forestry program that's a pilot with the city of Guelph. So we'll either have heard about it, or we'll soon hear about it. I can't remember. It's not embargoed, but I can't remember if I actually heard about it prior to being announced or just as it's being announced. So there should be some urban forestry funds available with the Partnership of Forests Ontario. So I think that's everything I can tell you right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Here again. Thank you very much. Oh, Director Haslam?
I'll just add, in our municipality, trees don't seem like a big deal, but there has been the Emerald Ash Borer that is decimating all the ash trees in the municipality. And we have many ash trees, you know, in the ravines and on the... Been in discussions about these tree policies, like do we start... You know, we're gonna have to start planning to take these trees. They're gonna die. Do we get ahead of it by starting to plant trees to replace those trees that we know they're gonna have to be taken down? Like the ash trees, the message we're getting from the experts is that the ash trees are dying, and they're all gonna die, you know? So it is a significant issue. That have these tree-lined streets, and you cut down the trees or you remove the trees, it's a totally different streetscape, totally different environment, totally different feel. So we will have to plan and apply resources. But I think we have somebody who's very, very passionate about the environmental issues in the town, and the command has been a great hire and a good addition to our team.
Excellent. Reeve Emo?
Add to that, if you'll remember, about two years ago, the Renfrew Innovation Centre, we had to take down, I think it was eight ash trees along that that were adjacent to O'Brien Road. Because they were, if you hadn't noticed them, all of a sudden, the foliage was all gone, and they were just desolated. So they were all taken down. So you'll still see the stumps there with some kind of a weed growing out of it. But that's something that has to be considered at all times.
Anything else? Thank you very much. That was great. Onto D2. Owner endorsement of drinking water quality management system operation. Director Aslan? Oh, wait, hang on. Sorry. Hold on.
Okay.
There is a motion for this. That Renfrew Town Council authorized the mayor and clerk to sign the Renfrew Water Distribution System Operational Plan, which will provide the required owner's endorsement. A mover and a seconder. Reeve Emo? Seconded by Council Leader. Turn it over to Director Haslam?
Yeah, so just the highlights on this is we told you about our DWQMS system. There's 21 elements. We did have internal, external audits that recommended some changes to our operation plan in the DWQMS. So Amanda has gone through those changes and essentially is bringing forth an amendment to the operation plan, which incorporates the opportunities for improvements and the non-conformance we had with respect to the language around continuous improvement. So there's a whole process in DWQMS that we have to plan an activity. We have to do it, and then review it, and then improve it, and just keep going around in a circle. And so we had to close the loop on the continuous improvement component. Anything else to add, Amanda?
Nope. Mike, you say it best.
Counsel, any questions? Reeve Emo?
Do I remember this correctly, but you have an internal departmental review process? So it's not just one person? It's spread across your team, if I remember this correctly?
Yeah, that was something we worked on initially. When DWQMS arrived, we didn't have an environmental officer, so essentially, there was a one-person DWQMS team. And so we've expanded it now, and we've taken our... Our CBO had experience in municipal operations, so we incorporated, you know, Tom to do internal audits. This position, this environmental officer position created, so they became the quality management representative. And one of the other activities is the top management review. So now I can focus on reviewing the work of the whole team, and we've really broadened the responsibilities and distributed them throughout the staff, which was definitely a requirement, you know, is required to be sustainable. And, you know, if one person leaves, the whole process doesn't fall apart. So it's good succession planning as well. And yeah, so the system is much more, you know, rigorous and broadened from what it was five years ago.
Anything else? All right, so I'll read the motion again. That Renfrew Town Council authorized the mayor and clerk to sign the Renfrew Water Distribution System Operational Plan, which will provide the required owner's endorsements. All in favor? Okay. Thank you very much, counsel. Onto D2.2. That Renfrew Town Council endorsed the annual drinking water quality management system policy. Mover. Counsel agree? Seconded by? Reeve Emo? Turn it over to Director Haslam?
Yeah, this one is very simple. It's an annual commitment of council to basically, you know, commit to the principles of the DWQMS. So if you look at the document itself, it has a bit of the scope, and it says the town of Renfrew is committed to produce and distribute safe drinking water to all connected consumers. There's a procedure that identifies that there's quality management system in place for continuous improvement, and that the town's committed to comply with the applicable legislation and regulations related to the supply and distribution of drinking water. And I think that's a fair statement considering the consequences. So annually, we have the council commit to this policy, and then we put it in our management review, and it shows the town's commitment, the council's commitment towards the drinking water system.
Yeah, essentially the no-wiggle policy. Essentially, the no-wiggle policy.
So the motion is the Remfor Town Council endorse the annual drinking water quality management system policy. All in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you, counsel. On to groundwater easement agreement. I'll turn it back over to Director Hasel. Oh, I need to do the recommendations first. Sorry. I always forget that. I will get it. The Remfor Town Council authorized the registration of the groundwater easement on certain properties for the purpose of establishing contaminated... How many is that? Attainment zone over the area between Bruce Street and Volter River. Director Hasel. Mover and seconder? Revi mo? Councillor Szabolski?
Yes, so as part of our ECA, there was a requirement to have a contaminant attenuation zone, which basically puts the control of any water and potential contaminants running from the landfill to the Bonnershire River under the control of the municipality. So we have been approached by an owner of several properties in this quadrant, and he's basically worked with the town to voluntarily turn over the groundwater easement to us. So this is a very, very generous, you know, approach. And he understands that any development in that area of these lands will be on piped water and sewer systems. That's part of our official plan. And that the groundwater easements should not have any effect on the development of these lands. But certainly, acquiring the groundwater easements assists the municipality in complying with the environmental responsibilities under our ECA. And once we have the groundwater easements, we own a number of properties as well, so in that quadrant. And the map was shown in Amanda's presentation, that hatched orange zone. And, you know, ultimately, we have to keep acquiring groundwater easements. Or if there's any development on a property that doesn't have a groundwater easement, that will become a condition of development is that they provide the groundwater easements. So we'll get them, I guess, one way or another over the years. We do have control through the planning processes to acquire those kind of easements. And, but this property owner that we're speaking of tonight, you know, voluntarily, you approached the municipality to work with us to turn these groundwater easements over, which is a very, very refreshing approach. And anything to add, Amanda?
No, I guess just there's, is the financial comment here that we are responsible for the legal fees, but we're not actually paying for the property. The property owner still retains ownership of the property. It's just for the groundwater.
Any questions? Revi mo?
It's not so much a question, but it's an observation that one of the unfortunate consequences of owning a landfill is that there is leachate flows off it somewhere. And in this instance, most of it flows in the direction of that property. So for that property owner to recognize, you know, that he was able to assist the municipality in meeting its obligations is significant. It's a little easier, and that's a very tenuous term in an urban setting as opposed to rural setting. Because as the director noted, the future servicing will be by pipe services in that area. Were it not, then it becomes a substantially more expensive proposition to compensate the landowner for the land. So it's a good move, a good move, the wise move, and the best move for the town on a go-forward basis. And we're very fortunate, the landowner has a commitment to the environment and also to the town and recognizes the importance of this. So it's a win-win for both parties.
No questions? All in favor? Let's carry. Thank you, counsel. On to confirmation minutes. That Remfor Town Council confirmed the minutes of council dated December 20, 2022, and the closed session minutes of December 20, 2022, understanding that they remain confidential. Mover and a seconder? Councillor agree? Councillor McCordar, any questions about the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor? That motion is carried. On to notice of motion. As we recall, last meeting, there was a notice of motion. And that Remfor Town Council directs staff to investigate the operations of horses and buggies and electric mobility scooters within the town, including applicable bylaws, policies, and regulations. Upon the conclusion of the investigation, staff will report back to council on findings, including potential solutions to address the above noted matters. Mover, please. Councillor McCordar, seconded by Councillor agree. Any questions about this? Councillor Dick?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious. I apologize, I wasn't here at the last meeting, and I did read this. I'm just, there's no timeline. Do we have a timeline, or is it just kind of, just doesn't say when they're going to report back?
In discussing the motion with the clerk, the clerk will provide a response back on the different bylaws that require amendment and a timeframe in terms of that, in terms of the staff work plan. And as we're developing goals and objectives for the CAO, we're doing that for each department and with the budget and the strategic plan. So we understand the work that you expect of counts of staff. But we anticipate that these require some updates of bylaws that might require additional work that haven't been looked at in a while. So Victoria will have a summary report coming forward in the next kind of month to two months. And then we'll, some of these bylaws, before you change them, require public consultation and just to outline the process, so that that will come to standing committee and to council.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you, counsel. Okay. Is there any other notices of motion coming forward by council? Seeing none. On to bylaws. That bylaw 1/2023 and 2/2023 listed on the agenda of January 3, 2023, be taken as read and passed. Mover, please. Councillor McCordar, seconded by Revi mo? Any questions? All in favor? Let's carry. Thank you, counsel. Just to let everybody know, upcoming meetings of council and standing committees, regular council meeting is January 10 and January 17. Twenty, oh, sorry.
Your indulgence, I forgot. I couldn't read my writing. But with, I know that's unusual. If anybody's ever seen it, poor Victoria. Just with, in terms of the landfill, there is a landfill closure reserve, because anytime you close a section of the landfill, you have to maintain it like forever. And that was something, I think we have approximately $500,000, and we put, is it $25,000 a year into it, Director? On a regular basis, something like, pardon me? $50,000. I think we slashed it one year for some reason. I can't remember. But anyway, so that was just something I forgot to mention in passing. My apologies.
All right. We have a mover and a seconder for this already? Don't need one? For the, no, for the bylaw?
Oh, bylaws, I don't care.
Okay, we did all right. Perfect. Oh, yeah, right. So yeah, next meetings are January 10 and 17, and a committee of the whole meeting on the 31st. Nothing else on the agenda? We are now adjourned at 7:58. Thank you very much, counsel.